Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 27th, 2019 School Committee Meeting. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's have a moment of silence for our troops serving overseas, please. The first item on the agenda is public participation. Our first participant is Mr. Marley. Mr. Marley, you have two minutes.
Oh, Marley, 53 Chester Street. Good evening, honorable members. Great genius who reform public education in this nation, Horace Mann said. Public education is the key in creating better society. Lawrence Public School moving forward. Now more Level 1 schools, more higher school graduate. Make us proud as a parent and a citizen. Our city, the birthplace of the revolution of the bird and roses of 1912. We support our teachers and their best union. Citizen rising up in support of our teacher nationwide. In Lawrence, we are proud that the best teachers' union. Lawrence Public School with the impeccable leadership of Honorable Superintendent Paris moving forward. Because of her awesome leadership, Lawrence Public School remained open after September 13, 2018 crisis. Her innovative plan of 100 days just listening to the principals and the staff and community to find out their need and goals. A great step in correcting the issue of student absenteeism across the district have been excellent, helping our seniors. Genius such as Ben Franklin said, "Investment in education is the best investment and has the highest return." Our city with the best education for the future of our children enable our children to be, to get to the best colleges and schools. Remember, in this important election year, approve the new calendar, which is good for our parents and our teachers. Remember our hard-working custodial, they need a best contract possible. Please have more School Committee meeting since we missed gathering here with our School Committee members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marley. Next up, we have myself for public participation.
All right, good evening, everyone. Our youth have been learning about the Civil Rights Movement for Black History Month as if it were a thing of the past, but the reality is, we are still in the midst of the Civil Rights Movement and education injustice is the civil rights issue of our time. State takeovers of schools are predominantly happening in poor Hispanic and African-American communities and school systems that were never designed to serve them equally in the first place. It's been over 60 years since Brown versus Board of Education, and yet, according to a briefing report by the Commission of Civil Rights published last year, the longstanding and persistent reality is that the vast funding inequities in our state public education systems render the education available to millions of American public school students profoundly unequal. An achievement gap has resulted and persisted largely between students who attend well-funded schools in low-poverty neighborhoods and the most disadvantaged students, often of poor, students of color from poor households who attend poorly-funded schools in high-poverty neighborhoods. What does the Department of Education do to those underperforming schools in poorly-funded areas? They rip away their democratic rights to oversee the education of their children. This is taxation without representation, and it should be unconstitutional. We live in a state that rather spend $50,000 plus per inmate and only $13,000 per pupil in Lawrence. We spend more money keeping people in jail than we do in preventing them from going there in the first place. We have a huge school-to-prison pipeline in Lawrence, and no one's talking about it. In fact, the School Committee has never presented with opportunities to be a part of policymaking to help remediate the problems affecting their constituents, hence the push for joint meetings. And for some strange reason, it was decided for us to decrease the frequency of meetings despite all the issues affecting our students. All this does is create a community of learned helplessness rather than strengthening community engagement and leadership, which is what research shows is the most, is most needed for an effective turnaround of our schools. Thank you.
Next up for our public participation, we have Tom Myers.
I'm gonna have a hard time even beginning to match the eloquence of the previous two speakers, and mine will be more mundane. First of all, Tom Myers and I reside at 550 Haverhill Street here in this city, and I'm gonna sort of reiterate what Marianella just had indicated, and that's that I wish that the School Committee as our elected officials begin to meet once every two weeks and once a month during the summer. This was a procedure of the School Committee in Andover when I was the Teachers' Union President there. And I think not to do that not only takes away the ability of the Committee to function properly, but it also takes away our ability as citizens to meet publicly and to speak with our elected officials. Next, as you all know, I think I have provided all of you up there with a transition plan which I authored. I have spoken to the City Council about the plan and met with several people, including Mayor Rivera, to go over the plan, and I've asked a few people on the Committee to also to set up appointments to do that. I would like to meet with everybody, and again, so that our district can begin to move towards democratic control by our duly-elected officials. I have brought a few copies if anyone on the Committee would like an additional copy. Finally, and I'm shifting terrain on you, I would like to invite all of you to an education forum which will be held on Thursday, March 21st, at El Tayer Restaurant concerning the impact of the state receivership takeover upon public education within our community. And we have a distinguished panel, all who have deep roots in our community. One being our own Vice Chair of the School Committee, Dr. Marianella Rivera; another, Quinn Gonell, who is a doctoral student in education at the University of Vermont; another person is Awilda Reynoso, who is a graduate student in education at Brown University. We also plan to have a student and a teacher and to have as the moderator a parent, Elizabeth Lavasta.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. That was two minutes.
Okay, just to finish quickly then. So this is important to have people from the community, people with vast academic background and doing research in this area to take a serious look at the impact that receiverships have, which has not been positive at all. The academic research is overwhelming, showing that to be the case. Thank you.
Next on the public participation, we have Elizabeth Lavasta. I just want to remind you that you have two minutes for public participation.
Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. My name is Elizabeth Lavasta. I am a parent of students here in the Lawrence Public School System. I'm here tonight to tell you thank you for allowing us to continue with these meetings in the community. I think it's, it shows a sign of the respect that you have for the democracy of the residents and citizens in the city of Lawrence. Today, what I would like to discuss with the panel is our compulsory testing that we have. I would like to bring up the points of the two different type of testing that the students have throughout the year, one being in particular the ANET testing. The MCAS testing is something that we had prior to the ANET testing, but what I find as a parent is that in addition to the MCAS testing, the continuous six weeks, every six weeks trial of the ANET testing is bringing and suppressing the students' motivation down. I believe that the students could probably perform better in the MCAS test had they not be tested every six weeks unnecessarily to find that there have been small changes that are not even applicable to the changes that we need to get in the, in the MCAS testing. Let me remind you that a couple of months ago, when there was a new applicant for a charter school here in the city of Lawrence, although democratically, the residents of Lawrence had voted against the new charter school happening, the reason why that application was even able to come into the city of Lawrence was due in fact to the research that shows that our students are supposedly underperforming. So those little hidden rules in those laws allow people to continue to come into the city and abuse our rights and try to take over what we feel. I believe that that's a situation that if you are going to be a new homeowner, homeowner in the city of Lawrence, you're gonna get turned off to the fact that knowing that while the city is in receivership, you're gonna buy a house in a city where the people have no rights over their students' education. And let me remind you that this year alone, I believe the taxes had gone up a couple of times on people that own houses in the city of Lawrence. Therefore, I believe that their rights as homeowner and taxpayers are going to be shortened or short-lived when they find out that they have no right over their students' education. I only bring these things up because I believe in my city, I love my city, and I'm gonna stay here fighting for the rights of this city. And I think one of the ways that we could fight is to speak to the parents and, and hear their voice on why they like to live in the city as well. I would love to continue to work with you and do anything that I can as a parent to talk to other parents and let them know that they can help their kids be successful, but I do think that we shouldn't continue to put a blind eye to the things that these takeovers are doing to our community. Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you. We'll provide those names to the clerks of Anderton to the record. Next on the agenda is Communications and Reports. First off, Superintendent Paris, we have enrollment presentation.
Great. So tonight, we wanted to circle back and give you an update on our enrollment. We had shared with you earlier in the fall where we stand with enrollment, and it's a good time since it's connected specifically to our planning for next year. As you may know, our city is growing, and we have, we're experiencing what we, what Keith Edding would say, "Highest since 1950," and this is of course according to our census. So our role is to continue to monitor our growth. Our role is also to continue to think about the capacity of our schools and to think short-term and long-term. This graph here shows our 10-year trend, and you can see in your packets, it's a closer view at this, that we're trending upwards. The slight variation that you see from 2016 to 2018, we have students that are enrolled in the district. You will see this in the next slide. We have some students that are currently out of districts, but in this next slide that you will see, that's also featured here, you'll see that the 2017-18 versus the current school year, just a slight difference of students, and those are students that are not, that are enrolled with us, but then we have students who are placed outside the district. The majority of those students are being serviced because we currently believe that they, their needs are best served in other settings. Next, we want to give you examples of our class-size challenges. So here's an example of the Leahy Grade 4, and what you see is that in grades 1 through 4, we have maxed out our capacity. What you see also is that Up Oliver in grade 8, we're also at capacity for those grades. And finally, here is Arlington in our 6th grade, and you also see the challenge that we face in this, in these grades. This next slide gives you an idea of what happens when we have reached our cap size. We call that closing classrooms. So we've decided what the class-size cap is, and then internally, we have variances for families when those class sizes have been met. So here's a little graphic for that. We have student number 1, and they are in District Red, but what happens is, in that district, there is no room, so we move student number 1 to the Blue School. But then, we have student number 3 who arrives, and that student also needs placement in the Blue School because that's their district school. We then need to find a variance for that family, and we give them options within another district that has space for that class. And then it happens to be in the Yellow School for student number 3. So it's a constant thinking through of the different classes, class size for all of our schools, recognizing that we are neighbor, we're committed to neighborhood districts, and making sure that class size stay favorable. We do have solutions, and we want to present those to you today. So in the example, we have some long-term solutions, and then I also want to propose some short-term solutions for the current challenge that we have at the Arlington. In this slide, we see our 3- to 6-year solution. As you may know, we have the Oliver Partnership School and the Leahy School online to be renovated and/or reconstructed. However, these projects will not be completed for another six years. Just this week, we went to the MSBA and hired, if you would, our design firm, and it's a process that starts now and will take about three years. So when these two projects are completed, we will have additional capacity of 1,000 students in the Partnership School and another 1,000 students in the Leahy. In the interim, however, we have to think about the current challenges. So here's the example of the increased caps on class size, and short-term solutions include adjusting boundaries, which means if you're a family in the Leahy School and that school has reached capacities, what we do is we stretched out the streets, kind of the boundaries of the school, and allow for students to go to a different school, or we shrink it in. It's a kind of a shrinking and an expanding. Another thing we've done, for example, is we've added classrooms to both the Wetherby in grades 3 and OPS in grades 2 to address again the class-size challenge. We call these bubble classes, which means these schools have three to four strands, and then we add an additional classroom to relieve the class size. So an example of that is, in the Wetherby, we have strands of, let me think this through, three. For example, in 3rd grade currently, the number of students in that strand is 69 students. So you can do the math, and you can see it's, it sort of turns out to be 69 divided in three, somebody will do the math, that's the number of students in three strands. The rising cohort, however, has 74 students. So in this case, in the Wetherby, we will continue to keep what we call a bubble, an additional class, to keep the class size favorable. We did this also at the Partham Elementary this year. We had an average of 29 students in the beginning of the school year in September. We got a call from the principal and the staff. We had projected a number of students in kindergarten. We got over-projections, so we opened up a classroom. We can only do that when a school has room to then reduce class size. In the instances where we cannot add a class, then we add additional support staff for those classrooms. But again, these are short-term solutions, and we always think about the long-term as well. So here's additional solutions. Again, we're gonna continue to think about our class size. We currently, we currently max it at 30 in the upper grades and 25 for the lower grades. We're gonna continue to adjust those boundaries. As I said, they shrink and they expand, they shrink and they expand. We continue to add additional classrooms in schools that actually have the space to relieve the class size and bubbles, and we'll add bubble classes when needed. Next year, however, we have the challenge of the Arlington Middle where our, Arlington Middle has gained more than 100 students since 2014. In the configuration of Arlington Middle, the students, the feeder pattern is that they come from Tarbuck's, Tarbuck's Elementary. So currently, half of the Tarbuck Rising 6th graders, that's about 25 students, are assigned to Arlington Middle, and the other half go to Up Oliver. So we are proposing sending Arlington Middle, half of them, the Rising Tarbuck students, to Up Leonard instead, which means that we're going to support that transition with transportation. This will help us reduce that class size, and within three years, we think we will right-size Arlington Middle. Both schools will still have room to grow in terms of their residence, and if you're a neighborhood student, as we think about the challenge long-term. We know that addressing this capacity and rezoning requires support, so we've been in communication with both principals at the Tarbuck's and of course, Up Leonard, and we want to make sure that our families have the same accessibility to Up Leonard as they would if they were going to Arlington Middle. So we want to make sure, today, for example, there were two meetings held this morning. We had meetings with families, and they had an opportunity to ask questions of the principal of Up Leonard. This afternoon, as we're meeting right now, we're having another parent meeting informational. We want to make sure that they have transportation to and from Up Leonard. We want to make sure that they have transportation and shuttles for family events, and we also want to make sure that their schools, the bus schedule, excuse me, allows them to participate in after-school programming. So again, as I had mentioned, the next steps for us is to communicate with our families. This will not be a forced, a forced proposal to families. We're, we're going to be inviting them to join Up Leonard, and those families who choose to remain in the feeder pattern to Arlington Middle, of course, we will honor that. This morning, for example, we had four families. Out of those four families, three were very excited to join Up Leonard. One, because they have a younger student, a younger infant, excuse me, was very clear that they wanted to remain in the feeder pattern because of walking distance, and that was their choice, and of course, we're gonna honor that as well. We're going to finally design a transition event to support the families that have chosen to join Up Leonard. Questions about enrollment as we think about it long-term and of course, short-term, and questions about the proposal for Arlington Middle?
Ms. Gonzalez. So my question is, so if, how many families in total have to decide to move on?
We were hoping that between 20 and 25 would say, yes, we're open to that idea. Because that would give us, sorry, because that would give us one class for the 6th grade cohort to join Up Leonard and relieve Arlington Middle.
What are the steps if we don't reach the 25 families?
That's a great question. So we still have room at Up Leonard to receive as little and as many. The idea would be a full class because we can do that at Up Leonard, but even if we can relieve a little bit from Arlington Middle, that still helps the, the challenge at Arlington Middle. We're not there yet, we're still exploring it, so we're gonna have to think through, what happens if we don't have more than, let's say, 10, and it doesn't relieve Arlington Middle at all? We're still gonna add additional supports to Arlington Middle as we continue to think about how big that class size is gonna be.
Mariano.
Superintendent, in looking at the, the caps on the classroom sizes, I just have to say that I'm very uncomfortable with the K to 1 going from 20. First of all, 22 is too much for a K and 1. Too, too high. And going from 22 to 25 without considerable support for our staff, I don't see how that's going to work. And also, when you talk about 2 to 8, going from, let's say, 25 to 30, we need, we need to put some plans in place for support for our staff. You know, we ask our teachers to do more and more every single day. Our students come to, come to us with a myriad of problems, and the social-emotional piece is huge in the schools. So I think if we have to go this route while we're preparing budgets for the different schools, we have to consider putting more staff in the classroom to support the teachers and the students.
Thank you. Yes, I think our principals and staff members would agree with you, and during the budget process which is taking place in the next two weeks internally, our principals are starting to advocate for, for the same path. So we're definitely going to be thinking that through in terms of class size. We're gonna be encouraged, we're gonna be keeping bubbles where we have them now and take a close look, especially in those lower grades where literacy for us will be a priority.
Thank you.
Ms. Seward.
So I have two questions. The first question is similar to School Committee Woman Mariano, which is, what are the academic implications of the increased class size, both on students and teachers? And do you have any firm numbers or information on that? And how do those increased class sizes compare to the surrounding communities?
Yes. So final projections will be available to us after we get all the census data, and we'll be able to give you the specifics about where the class size is, but we do max it out at 30 in the higher grades and 25. So the question is, is that a favorable class size? The answer will vary, but what we know from research is that the lower class size, the better opportunities that teachers have to be able to differentiate, to be able to do one-on-one, small groups with our students, and so, of course, we always want to keep the class size as small as possible. There's many ways to do that. The best one, of course, is to say, we're going to try to keep it lower. The next way to doing that, if we don't have the space, is to add additional supports. So in the case of Arlington Middle, we don't have space in the school, and because we're a neighborhood district, what we do is we add additional support staff so that then kids can get pulled in smaller groups and there's more than one adult working in the large class size.
Okay. And so I heard you say that you were, you know, in the internal stages of looking at budgetary considerations, but what are the considerations for transferring the students to another school in the district? And how are you planning for the anticipated increase in expenses, both for staff, faculty, and transportation?
Yeah, our preference is not to move them out of district, so that's sort of our, like, Plan B and C. We choose, we like to keep our students in neighborhood for many reasons, of course. And so when that happens, then we do have to support and, and think through on final projections what the impact will be on the transportation, absolutely. So we're responsible, and of course, we would do the financial implications of that, but we're careful to do those projections based on the census, but we won't have that data for a few more weeks. But we're happy to bring you back with the final numbers of what class size will look like.
Thank you.
Dr. Rivera.
So I just want to reiterate some of the concerns that my colleagues mentioned with regards to the increase in class sizes. Just in reviewing the research, it says that a class size, no more than 18 students per teacher is required to produce the greatest benefits. And to me, it just, it seems like we're kind of working backwards. If the goal of this receivership and turnaround plan is to boost academic achievement, then by increasing these caps, we're just kind of working against ourselves here. So I guess for me, the concern is what Member Mariano brought up in regards to the additional supports in the classroom that are gonna be needed for the students to be successful, especially after this year with the students suffering from a lot of trauma after the gas explosions. I'm just concerned about the increased needs of, of support. I'm just concerned about the increased needs of support and how much that would cost in order to fully fund their education.
Yeah, you're right. And I think our preference, again, is to lower class size by adding additional classrooms, but our schools are not big enough for that. So in the case of Arlington, we would immediately open up another section, but we just don't have the space. So the next best solution is to add supports. And so we think about it cohort by cohort. And you should feel really comfortable knowing that teachers and school leaders are strong advocates of that. So they're the first ones to email, call, and I'm visiting the schools all the time to see how, what impact it's having and what supports it needs. So an example of that is, sometimes the teacher will say, what I would like is an interventionist on a, whatever FTE that is, just to help me with small group. Sometimes the teacher says, what we need is a paraprofessional, right? So it really varies, class by class, cohort by cohort, and grade by grade. In the lower grades, almost always, it is a paraprofessional because the little, our youngest ones need a lot more support, and those are full-time people. Oftentimes, it's a shared para or a shared interventionist, a shared reading specialist, so it really varies. So we look to our teachers and our school leaders to guide us in that.
So during this budget season, will you have more objective information in regards to
Yep.
those particular supports?
Yes, and it's happening right now. So an example of that today was one of the school leaders advocated to add an additional classroom. And then another example is, one of the school leaders advocated to keep their bubble classroom to reduce the size of their, of their rising cohort. Because, in this case, it's a second grade cohort in a section of three. And she calls them angsty. She's like, these guys need to be spread out. So now that class, that cohort will be reduced in class size because it's a different cohort than the third grader. This rising second graders. So it really varies. And the school leaders are doing an excellent job advocating for their teachers.
Thank you.
Member Berglino?
Sorry. Superintendent, you may have already answered this, but we talk about the class sizes. I feel like I'm talking really loud. At twenty-two for kindergarten and one going to twenty-five, what is the current ratio of students?
What's the average right now?
Yeah.
That's a great question. I don't have that offhand. I will tell you that we do have kinders and first grade and second at twenty-five with additional support. And then there's other schools and classrooms at eighteen, nineteen, twenty. It really varies. So an example of eighteen is some of our inclusion classrooms, for example. Right? So we're very sensitive also that when we are introducing students who need the additional support, we keep that class size smaller.
Okay.
Ms. Seward?
So in referencing Keith Eddings' article, right now, we're talking about kind of stopgap measures to adjust to the immediate needs in terms of the increase of our student enrollment. But over the next ten years, it's projected that we're going to grow even more. What is your long-term strategic plan to deal with the growth that we know is coming?
Right. So as I mentioned earlier, we do have two projects online that will help us with the ten-year projections. And we're constantly keeping track of that year by year, month by month. Because there are other projects internally, housing projects, developments, that come online that will impact that as before the ten-year growth, right? And so we're going to have to be really creative. We'll come back to you all, we'll come back to the community and think through what happens if we have a sudden influx of families in X district versus X district. Does that mean now we have to move away from our commitment to neighborhood schools? I don't know. I don't know. But our main concern is the current status of a couple of our schools, as it stands, that are too big.
Thank you.
So this is a tough one, because I think what it shows us is that, you know, we, the plan they put before us is not a plan of desire, but a plan of necessity. And they have to figure this thing out every day, because the kids are coming in every day. And so initially, when I saw this stuff, I was really, I think I said I was dismayed about it, because I just not, it seems like we're playing kind of like musical chairs with these kids, and you know, the whole idea of neighborhood schools and moving away from that would be a problem. But I think that the work that's being done here by staff to figure this thing out with the kids' best interest in mind is heartfelt in there. I think even hearing about the meetings you're having with staff and during the budget process about what they're trying to troubleshoot this is real. I say all that to preface the fact that I think this is something that we can't allow to continue. I know we do have two buildings coming online, but I think that the reality is, is if we're not before the Masters School Building Authority every year, or every year and a half, or every two years, however, the, you know, our borrowing will allow us, our credit will allow us to do it. I think that would be, it would be bad for us to do that, to not hit every year, try to get another school on the list. But besides that, I think we also have to look for another option. An option that can get us kids in a place faster than four years. And I think there are options to do something like that. They're not cheap, they're not easy, but I think, you know, with students only have one time to be in fifth grade, one time to be in sixth grade. And if we can fix it for, with only one or two cohorts being affected, that's better than waiting for four cohorts to be affected. And so I've, I want this presentation actually to be done in front of the city council. Because I want them to understand the depth and breadth of what we're looking at, so that when we do go before them to borrow, not only for the new schools, but maybe in an interim solution that might cost money, either borrowing or to take from the reserves, that they're fully informed about how big of a deal this is. To me, the most telling slide is the slide with the kids in the school. And that, there's a point in that slide where the kid from the red school.
The movement of the kids, student A, student B, yellow, blue, and red.
What page is that? This one here. Step right here. So you see, at one point, and these, by the way, these schools are not geographically close to each other. They're, on the slide, they're close to each other, but they're not geographical. So at some point, a kid who would have, who would normally need to go to the red school will end up going to the yellow school, and the kid who goes to the yellow school would end up going to a red school. By the way, this works, and this is, it ends up being random. At some point, some kid's going to get. And so those, I don't know, fifteen to twenty kids across the cohorts are being, I think, negatively impacted in a big way. And so seeing that and having a commitment to try to figure out an interim solution, the other thing that I said when we first saw this was, this isn't just a Lawrence problem. We should, and this, what we have before us is a solution by the staff and faculty and the superintendent of Lawrence Public Schools. But I really do think that this is a problem for that neighborhood, which is one of the poorest neighborhoods in the, poorest census tracts in the Commonwealth. And if receivership is about anything else, it should be about helping us figure these problems out. And even though we do get eighty percent reimbursement for MSBA projects, I think a conversation about this specific problem for a receivership system around, especially a receivership school, which is the Arlington, you know, in support of that, to move them away from underperformance is necessary and appropriate. And, you know, we're going to be working with the superintendent to figure out a way to get an interim solution. You know, there's a lot of problems with that. I mean, if you try to open up another, another space, it's not just a place for kids to sit in a chalkboard. It's teachers and support staff and janitors and security, and a place for kids to play, all that stuff. It's really a big deal. So I'm not taking that for granted, but I am taking the fact that, you know, if there's a way that we could not negatively impact that many kids, that we should do that. And I think we start by bringing this conversation to our colleagues at the city council, so they know that not by desire, but by necessity, this is happening. And then if we, if we come together, we can do something to, as an interim solution. Frankly, we're going to need something as we're building the Leahy out, as we're building the Oliver out. We're going to have to do stuff while we're building those schools, because kids are going to have to be moved around, so. I say all that to say that even though it feels like there's this bad thing going on, I think it's basically a call to action for us all to do something in the interim.
I have a live update from the family meeting that's happening at up Leonard. And I think this is to your earlier question, what happens if we don't get enough families? So total of eighteen parents, and only two parents are not interested in joining up Leonard next year. So that's a total of sixteen-twenty right now that would be interested.
Yeah, I just, oh, sorry about that. The other, and I didn't say this the other night when we saw this, I, I think poor families are going to be happy with what they get. And I think they're not going to know enough to say, hey, can we keep them closer? And so I worry about that, that they're, they're saying, well, they must know what's good, I just, but they do have agency, can advocate for themselves. I don't want to take that away from them. I'm just saying, I feel like if we can do what we're doing for all the other kids, for this group of kids, I think it's, it would be important. Remember Mariano?
I was just sitting here thinking and looking at the slide, when the two new schools come online. If we could look into a crystal ball, is that going to solve our enrollment problem when those two schools are online? Because that's the densest part of the city where we need the most seats. And I, I, part of me says that we're still going to be overcrowded even when those two schools are on with the capacity of a thousand in each building. There's probably, there's no way of knowing, but, you know, we need to think that far ahead.
It's a great question. It's based on a projection, a ten-year projection. That's how MSBA will actually even grant you, like, what the size is. But of course, that can change, because real estate changes, movement in the city in different districts can also change.
But what's clear about this, and I said this in my state of the city address, is density is here. We had a lot of anti-density sentiments by elected officials in this community and by community members. Like, how do we go from, how do we keep it at seventy-five thousand people living here? That's not something that you can really control. What's ending up happening is that apartments, even though we're not growing the number, even though we're not growing the number of housing units as fast as we need to, the total number of people still coming in, and so people are living in overcrowded situations. And so, which is now creating an overcrowded situation in our schools. And people think that by not creating more housing, you could govern how many people will end up in our schools. I think that the current state is a perfect example of that that cannot absolutely happen. People are going to come, and they're going to put their kids in their schools, and this is a right for education state. And you got, you got to teach the kids who walk in the door. And so, yeah, this density thing is not going to go away. Any other questions on the matter? Thanks. Next, next to the items, superintendent's listening to our presentation?
Great, thank you. So in your documents tonight, you have the full report of my entry findings. But tonight, I wanted to highlight the introduction and process. I wanted to give you a few strengths, and then I wanted to share with you emerging themes that I learned. So in this process of a hundred days, when I arrived late this summer, I spent, it's from yesterday, from Monday? No, okay. All right. So maybe it's not up there. But you do have it in your materials, and I'll walk us through this. So I began late in the summer and had the opportunity to meet with many stakeholders, all of you at this table, of course, families, students, elected officials, community members. The list was enormous. What I found was, what I found was that everybody was incredibly generous, a spirit of information, eager to share with me. I was guided by three questions, which you all hopefully remember, which was, what's working? Tell me what needs attention, and of course, tell me what your expectations of me are. So what I learned was that our community has lots and lots of strengths. You all remember that my initial tenure was marked by our gas crisis that only heightened. What I learned was that this community not only is incredibly resilient and passionate, but when things like this happen, come together. And it was enormous, I had enormous proud to be had joined the community. In terms of strengths, I wanted to share and highlight a few of them. They're outlined in detail in the document. But you should know that things that I found as strengths is the successful implementation of the open architecture. Both staff and school leaders really are incredibly flexible and have enjoyed the autonomies, which include budget, professional development, staffing autonomies, and scheduling autonomies. Another thing that I found to be an emerging strength is our commitment to social-emotional learning and inclusions. So you should know that I learned that in our schools, we are doing inclusion practices. They're very promising. We're also doing quite a bit of social-emotional learning curricula and practices that are supporting our students. Another strength that I found was the expanded learning time. There's really some creative ways in which our staff members are really using the additional time and resources to support our students. The enrichment is one of them. There's lots and lots of opportunities for students that did not exist six years ago, and that continues to be a strength and well-favored by our students, our families, and staff. The last thing that I'll highlight in terms of our strengths is that we're also using innovative curriculum in ELA, in particular, and in science. I remember a fourth grade teacher who said, quote, about the science project, "I weep with joy," she said in the quote, "when she is able to use this curriculum with her students, they're so engaged." I had opportunities to witness her own excitement and the engagement of the students, and I was, I was really impressed with it. Last thing that I will say about our strength is that this community has an exceptional deep roster of partners that are committed to our schools, and I can't say enough about how much they support us and continue to work closely with us. Next, I want to talk about four emerging themes. And I'll frame it by saying that these emerging themes rose to the top because all of our stakeholders mention it to an extent. So there were many, many other themes that emerged, but again, I wanted to encompass the ones that rose to the top. So these four are, one, improving teacher recruitment and retention; two, strengthening the systems to support our students at risk; three, reshaping the high school redesign plan; and lastly, ensuring equitable distribution of resources. I'll share with you, again, highlights of the major finding. They're in detail in your documents. But in terms of improving teacher recruitment and retention, what I learned is that our schools have teacher leadership teams, our TLTs. And these teams help school leaders make important decisions, including scheduling decisions, how we spend budget, what we do with our PD. We also have a program called Advanced and Master Educated Program, and this has been designed to recognize high-performing teachers and promoting leadership opportunities for our staff. I also learned that fifty percent of our teachers have less than five years of teaching experience. And the last thing that I'll highlight is that the calendar for the school year and school day are varied across the schools. Next, I want to talk about some opportunities for growth or wonderings. And so the wondering is, can we strengthen our hiring practice to ensure that we have and make decisions as early as possible? Another wondering is emphasis on hiring bilingual and bicultural teaching staff specifically. And lastly, can we increase opportunities of professional collaboration among the district so that we can leverage our resources? Next, we'll talk about strengthening systems to support our at-risk students, and I'll highlight some of the major findings. So one of the findings is the transitions for students with special learning needs from middle to high schools were unclear for families and staff. An example of that is, at the middle school, we have transition meetings, but it's unclear to staff what the programming looks like at the high school and the other way around, so it becomes quite confusing for staff and families. The other thing I learned is that ancillary staff, so like speech pathologists, psychologists, occupational therapists, have high caseloads, and personnel is quite low. So we have challenges in being able to recruit and retain them, and in part, it's because they have high caseloads. Another thing that I'll highlight is that families shared frustration with special education process and services. And again, in part, as I highlighted, we have some transition challenges. We have transitions in communication and process. Last thing I'll mention is that, as I mentioned earlier, social-emotional practices in the curriculum is evident in our district. curriculum is evident in our district. I'll move on to wonderings and opportunities for growth, and I'll highlight a few of those. So the wondering is, can we create comprehensive social emotional well-being across the district for all of our students? The wondering about consideration of a response to intervention system with, of course, sufficient staffing levels to support that, specifically in literacy, math, and behavior interventions? One more would be implementing consistent continuum of special education programming to serve students throughout the district to relieve some of that confusion and frustration for families and staff members. Next, I'll highlight the reshaping of our high school redesign plan. So I learned that our juniors and seniors participate in early college courses. I also learned that they have access to college and career counseling, and that all of our eleventh and twelfth grade students participate in career readiness curriculum. Two more things that I'll highlight from the redesign is that the small school design offers opportunity for differentiated learning. We have small schools within the larger campus. And lastly, you should know that our high school is on track for re-accreditation this So wonderings and opportunities include, um, I think we can do a better job of finding ways to market our high school to ensure that everyone knows about the great things that are happening for our students. I think there is a university expressed sentiment and concern for the lack of perceived progress. And lastly, there's going to be an opportunity this spring for stakeholder input in the redesign plan. The last emerging theme is ensuring equitable distribution of resources. Open architecture rates high among our school leaders. The district is well-organized for an approach instructions to the operations. I learned also that families wonder about distribution of funds for particular schools, I think this is, um, as a result of open architecture. And that special education services are perceived to be underfunded. Lastly, I'll highlight that English learners' resources are also perceived as being inequitable, um, distribution of resources. Next, the wonderings and opportunities for growth is, perhaps we can do a better job of, um, creating transparency of funding sources among our families and our staff. I think we have an opportunity of communication strategy that creates more opportunity for feedback and establishing trust, including opportunities to develop trainings and learning workshops on the open architecture model specifically for our families and communities. And lastly, we're going to be implementing and should be implementing a robust English learner parent advisory council this spring. Our next steps is in that in the coming months, we're going to be collaborating with school leaders, central office team, to begin the work of thinking through the goals and objectives of our turnaround plan that will address some of the challenges that I've just previewed with you. Ooh, sorry. Questions that you have?
Sorry about that. The EL PAC, you just, I didn't see that the other night, um, that seems to be, um, you might get a lot of takers, I mean, there's, it seems like there'd be a lot of families that might do that, um, and what's that look like, and how do you envision it? Cause I think that seems novel, now that you do, you're talking about it, but it seems like we probably should have been doing it a long.
It turns out that, um, this is in part not compliance, but the Office of English Learners at the state level is part of the design. So every district is responsible for creating this committee in the same way that every district is responsible for creating a CPAC for students with disabilities. So it's in line with that.
Cool.
So there's clear guidance, I should have, uh, continued, there's clear guidance and criteria about who the members are, um, opportunities for meeting, what the discussion should be, and what the purpose of the team is.
Will that be run out of the Family Resource Center?
Our Department of English Learners will be facilitating that.
Remember Mariano?
Superintendent, thank you for taking the time to, um, do your tour and, and to listen. Um, a couple of things that have resonated with me, one, being that fifty percent of our teachers have less than five years' experience, and we need to make sure that there are systems in place to support them so that we can keep them, keep, keep our teachers happy and supported, um, so that this number, you know, decreases. Also, um, the response to intervention, um, I'm a dinosaur, and way back when, we used the response to intervention in the schools, and I think, um, that failed primarily because we didn't have the support staff to, to help us with the interventions. I'm talking the school-based, um, team, so that if we're looking at going back, which, by the way, is wonderful, wonderful, um, way of looking at student needs, um, if we're looking at going back to that and implementing it or continuing it, again, we need the people there, the behavior, the, the intervention people there to support, um, the children through those three tiers.
Agreed. Another way of also implementing a system like this is thinking about, what is the professional development that we offer our teachers, so that they have the skills to be able to say, today, after I've looked at this teaching that I've done, I can take this small group because I've, I feel supported, I have the right resources and instrument and supports to be able to take this small group of students and intervene on their behalf. So I agree with you.
I'm Soren.
So as we look at support for at-risk students, um, are we talking about, um, things like the school-to-prison pipeline, restorative justice, as it relates to behavioral intervention and school discipline policies?
I'm so glad you said that. So, um, we are working with the AFT in this, last month, actually, in combination with present, uh, union leaders and school leaders. We went to New York City, and we have an action plan in place that talks specifically about restorative justice practices that we are going to be thinking about adopting in our district. The plan is a multi-year plan, it starts with sort of thinking through, what is our belief system in terms of how we think about behaviors? How do we tease out things like mental illness, social emotional, special learning needs, and how, what is our response to that? In addition, we're gonna think through about our current discipline code of book and backwards map about, does that belief system in writing reflect our belief system, or do we have to revise the whole thing?
Thank you.
Anyone else on the hundred-day tour?
So actually, sorry, I have a follow-up question.
I'm Soren, absolutely.
So, in reviewing the next steps, um, I noticed that there was mention of the LAE as being a part of the collaboration team, but the school committee is noticeably absent, so I was just wondering if you could maybe explain why that is?
Yeah, I would love input from all stakeholders. So the first step in this, um, process in terms of reviewing and sharing my findings is with all stakeholders, including the school committee. So any changes that we do, and this is just specific to the turnaround plan, by the way, not to any other goals or objectives. So the mention here and the reason to be absent is specific just to the turnaround plan, does not mean I'm not gonna be seeking input or feedback about the, all these areas. So I could have done a better job in highlighting that difference, and so my apologies for that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thanks. Next item on the agenda is the district-wide calendar presentation.
Great. So in your documents tonight, you have four attachments. One, you'll see a student and family calendar. Two, you'll see a staff calendared, followed by the recommendations and guidelines and FAQ. So I'd like to highlight three, uh, three recommendations on the school calendar this year, and they are guided by our belief of, um, highlighting equity, uh, using an equity lens, and then we're trying to also address and acknowledge the challenges related to teacher retention and to chronic absenteeism. So you will note that the first thing on our calendar is that this year, we're gonna start school August twenty-sixth, which is a week later than we did last year, it's the week right before Labor Day. As you recall, last year, we started school, and then we had a heat wave, so we had to have half-days, which was tremendously problematic. The infrastructure of our schools, um, cannot sustain high temperatures, and so, we agree that starting a week later can alleviate that, in addition, supporting teachers who need a break during the summer. The second thing that you'll notice is that we are extending the December break this year for two weeks. This year, the December break, we asked families to come back, students to come back, on a Wednesday, which was, uh, not so good for attendance. Our attendance dropped dramatically. Families tend to go away for a bigger time because it's expensive to travel, they like to stay in warm places, so we're now asking families, go ahead and extend your break, and then come back that Monday, so we'll have a big campaign as to buy your tickets early, make your plans soon, and take a two-week break. And as it turns out, New Year's Day this coming year is on a Wednesday, so that also supports the extension of the December break. Lastly, you're gonna notice that we have professional development days and half-days that are uniform across the district. What I learned was that because of the autonomies, it's really hard for families who have students in multiple schools for release days, I have one kid here, one kid there, I don't know, I can't take this many days off. It's, it's a challenge, it's a challenge for our families. So, questions about that proposal?
Go ahead, Mia.
What I would say is that, you know, we were presented to us before, um, at the LAE board meeting, um, what we heard from members of the faculty and the union was that they support this plan, they think it's a good idea, um, and I, I think that that's where, I, I mean, that's where I started at, too, I think it's, it's good, we can't keep, we can't have a, a, a problem with attendance and keep doing the same things, expecting to get something different out of it. And then the idea that we might be burning teachers out, um, at the same time we're dealing with a turnaround, a turnover problem, um, that we need to figure out those solutions. We did talk at length about this idea of, you know, does this move away from the, um, the autonomy that schools are having, and but, you know, the superintendent talked about earned, earned autonomy, and that some schools that may be kind of concerned about this rolling out this way, if they have excellent, um, if they've been exceeding their expectations as far as performance is concerned, that there would be conversations with those specific schools, uh, but for the most part, more, that this would be a one-school, one-calendar type of system, but not, that that wouldn't really be, like, the first steps towards also doing, taking away autonomy around, uh, programming, which people are really, really supportive of. So, um, I'm glad we're trying to do something to address this, this issue of, this tremendously bad issue of attendance in our system. Anyone else? Okay. That's all. If anyone had any questions?
I got a question. So, um, since we don't have on the agenda our next school committee meeting, should we discuss that now, or?
Apologies for that. We do have a scheduled, um, commit, uh, school committee, and we're happy to email you with the next one.
Do we know what the date is? I think that's what you're looking for? The date, you don't have that?
We do, we do have it, we just don't, did not note it on the agenda.
April twenty-fourth.
Oh, April twenty-fourth, I think Pat has it.
I have it in my calendar.
Is there a way we can schedule a meeting anytime sooner than that?
We can certainly look into that.
I definitely think that we, as a committee, should, um, be meeting more frequently, given the issues that are impacting the district. So I move that we schedule a meeting for the upcoming month. We haven't met since November.
I, I think what's important for, to people to know is, like, in this setting, that if, if somebody wants to take some action, you gotta make a motion to make an action, somebody's gotta second that motion, and then we could take some action.
So I move, I make a motion that we schedule a meeting for next month.
There's a motion on that.
Second.
So now we have some discussion. I don't think that we can, um, force a school committee meeting, um, I think that we can ask, um, to, for both the receivership board and superintendent, um, to address that matter and, and, and then, and tell them that we would like that to be the case for the next meeting. I do think there's an LAE board meeting between now and March, between now and April, that they can bring that matter up, I think it's actually next month, um, and, and decide that, and have, give direction to, or take information from, both superintendent, um, to try to get that, that decided beforehand. That's what I would suggest that we do, um, just voting to do it, and then not getting the support from the district would be, um, I think, not good, so. I'll let other people talk, but I just, I think, and then maybe I'll give you a friendly amendment to your motion.
So, point of, point, I'm sorry. Point of information along those lines, um, as a part of the, um, LAE agenda, they have, um, a deliberation of the last-minute meeting, um, and so they vote on and accept those minutes. We don't have that present as a part of our agenda, and given that we voted at our last meeting, I think it's important for the record to talk about, um, and then get feedback on our vote to have subcommittee meetings. So I, I guess the question is, do we have any follow-up on that vote that we made?
Yeah, I don't recall it, cause I don't have the minutes, just like you, so I, I, and that definitely was not by design, I'm sure that that's just a miss. So do we take a vote at that mo, at that moment?
We, we did.
What was the vote? I don't recall it.
We agreed to bring it to the LAE to have joint subcommittee meetings, and so, i- it's hard to discuss because it's not on the agenda, but it would be helpful to have it.
Yeah, and so what, I, and again, I, I, as the chair, I think I should probably take some responsibility in that, that I dropped the ball on it, but I'll, I'll definitely bring that to the chair of the LAE board and try to get on the next agenda.
Thank you.
All right, both matters of, so, would you accept that as a friendly amendment?
So, I just wanted to add to the
Go ahead.
...discussion, um, because I do believe that regardless of us being in receivership, that we are an autonomous body, and that we, as a school committee, can meet and invite the school department to be in attendance to the meeting, whether or not they want to be in attendance to the meeting is a different story, but I think it's important for us to continue to engage the community in discussions that impact our youth on a daily basis. Um, you know, my colleagues and I, we get complaints all the time from constituents, we're never given opportunities to discuss their concerns, um, we're pretty much in a disenfranchised situation. I think it would, it would just behoove us as a community to strengthen the community, to engage the community in discussions during school committee meetings. I honestly think it's important for us to go forward, to strengthen the school committee, to continue doing our monthly meetings as we were doing in the past, I'm, I'm not quite sure why that changed, so that's why I think it's imperative that we continue in the tradition of having these monthly meetings to ensure that we're addressing all our constituents' concerns.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be the messenger, and so don't, I'm just trying to see what, how, what I see in front of us, not, um, necessarily that I agree with this a hundred percent. When the receiver and the superintendent was one person, there was really only one meeting, and there was only one group of people to talk to, which was the, um, the school board. And at that time, I think we all recall that receiver Riley told us, either separately or apart, that these are meetings that he was holding, if you look at the law, um... or part, that these are meetings that he was holding, if you look at the law, because he thought it was a good idea, but not because he had to. I'm only telling you what the reality is in front of us, I'm not trying to say that that's a good thing or a bad thing, I'm just telling you that's what it was. And so I think that for us, if we want to have monthly meetings, if we want to bridge that with the, bridge that with the receivership board and the superintendent, officially, we should do that. I think other, doing other than that and saying, you know, we should just meet regardless of what the other two entities, which is the LAE Board as a receivership and the superintendent, who in this, in this structure are two independent entities, I think would just be for naught. And frankly, I think it would be counterproductive for us to meet every month without the support of the district and the support of the LAE Board. I mention those things because I think there's a sympathetic ear at the LAE Board, so I don't, I don't want to fight about it here if we can get a yes and get it going.
So.
Ms. Sourd?
Yeah, I'm sorry. To your point, I think that's why we were advocating to start having some joint meetings to eliminate some of the duplication. So I appreciate your taking that back to the LAE Board.
But this seems like a different question, because that's what I'm saying, so the, and I missed the, again, I'm taking responsibility for it, of not bringing that to the chair of the LAE Board. But this is a different question, this is, should we ask to get monthly meetings on the docket? So I think that's better than just voting to do monthly meetings. So you take that as a friendly amendment, Dr. Rivera?
To, I'm sorry.
On top of the other?
I think we, as a school committee, can schedule a school committee meeting. We can still meet as an autonomous body, separate from the school department. We can meet as a community to discuss our constituents' concerns. This is separate. I mean, I honestly believe that we should continue with our monthly meetings, because what's going to happen is there's going to be a learned helplessness of the leaders that our constituents elected to represent them when it comes to the schools. I don't think we should be meeting at decreased frequency, I think that we should continue meeting monthly and continue with our monthly scheduled meetings.
I think the way to get to that is by sending a request to the receiver, the receiver to do so. That's all I'm saying. I'm saying that I agree with you, maybe we should be meeting every month, but I don't think that just deciding that we're going to meet every month is a good look. I think we should send them to the receivership board and ask them to vote on, making us meet every month. That's the way you do it, I think. You don't just do these things, I think you got to do it with some order. Because if, because the motion on the floor is going to stand the way it is for just us to set up monthly meetings, despite whether or not the superintendent is going to present, whether or not we get support from the district, I'm not going to support that. I think, again, that just shows a level of, you know, I think it just shows a level of us not wanting to do this in an orderly way, and I think if we asked, and yeah, we have to ask, I didn't take the schools away from us, this is just where we're at. So if we ask the LAE Board, like we were supposed to do, and I apologize, we didn't do about the subcommittees, but frankly, everyone, we should be helping me by reminding us, I won't forget now, but along the way, but I think that's the way to go. Any other questions or conversation on this matter?
I agree with you.
Okay. So you not take my friendly amendment?
Yes.
You do? Okay. Yes, you don't, or yes, you do?
The friendly amendment?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So the motion, as it sits on the floor, is to send, take a vote on requesting from the LAE Board a monthly meeting of the school board. Any questions on that vote?
We're going to, we're going to send a request from this body to the LAE to hold monthly meetings.
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Motion's on the floor, be seconded. All those in favor? Aye. All those against? Motion passes. John, can you just, again, this is weird, because I think if you, the motion from the last meeting was to send a request for the subcommittees, and I don't, I think that that's something, if we can send an email, I'll make sure it gets to John.
And I, and I believe, it's not that I, I just want to look back, I believe I had, I just, I believe. I can look back and I'll, I mean, I'm just, I can get after and let you know what you're asking. I don't even write, but I will, I can do that. I believe it's like, I'm asking.
Yeah. Do it again, can you just CC me on it? That way I can chime in to the conversation with the chair. It'll be a chair-to-chair conversation. Thank you. Anything further? See none? Do we make a motion to adjourn? Entertaining motion to adjourn?
Second.
Any second?
Sweet.
All those in favor?